So this is the City Council Select Committee to Study Barriers to Serving on City Boards and Commissions. Today's number thirteen, twenty twenty-two. These meetings run from seven to eight-thirty, and it's being held as a teleconference over Zoom, and it's being recorded. Welcome, everybody. Roll call, Beth.
Javier.
Here.
You said Jamila was not coming?
Yeah.
Mara?
Yeah.
Gwen? Oh, you said she's in the car, right? Okay, Jana?
Here.
Garrick?
Here.
And Cynthia?
Here.
Excellent. We have core. As I said, this meeting is being recorded, and at the same time, it's been done over Zoom. I'm gonna open it anyway for public comment. I know that we're coming within like twelve minutes after the time that we're supposed to come in, but just in case, I'm gonna wait one or two minutes if, just in case somebody comes. In the meantime that we're waiting for that, hopefully every one of you guys is safe at home. Excellent. Cool. Having in mind that, no, we don't have anybody waiting to do, well, if Vice President Foster wants to pull a comment, more than welcome on to be recognized later on, that's not a problem. So we're gonna move to the regular agenda. I know that almost two weeks went by after the last time that we met. I know that there was some back and forth in relation to the minutes and notes. Cynthia, was that, was that resolved?
I think you're not talking about the latest minutes, are you?
No, 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 not even, not even, not even the last, the last last, but the previous one.
Okay, just to be clear, we don't have minutes for the last meeting, or do we?
We, no, not yet.
Okay, fair enough. Yes, I agree. I, sure, I sent meetings, minutes for the next, last meeting.
Let's see, which?
No, I was proud for sending them so quickly, I thought.
I received minutes for the fifth and the sixteenth. And I didn't see any back and forth about it. I might not have been copied on it, but.
Yeah, but those are the two previous one, not counting the last one, right?
I thought August sixteenth was the last one, wasn't it? Let's take a look here.
According to my calendar, it was.
Yeah, yeah, that was, yeah, those were sent, yes.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so this is the thing. Uh, there's a lot going on in the world now. I would be more than willing to table the approval minutes, having in mind that, as I said, now we have said understand that our meetings are gonna be the second and the fourth Tuesday of every month. So I would be more than fine waiting, because I do prefer you guys going through the minutes. So the minutes before the sixteen, Cynthia went really in, in depth onto it, and that was really, really good. And I would prefer for you guys also to, to take a look to it. If that's okay with you, we can, we can just table it and move the problem of minutes, including for this meeting, to the, to our next meeting. Is that okay? Thumbs ups, thumbs down?
Yep. So that next meeting would be three, three minutes that would be on the table for approval? Okay.
Yes.
And just to be clear, just because I'm on a different board that works a little differently, the procedure will be, the minutes will be sent out to all of us at the same time, and if we had a correction, comment, question, should we direct that to you, Javier, or to Beth?
To me and Beth.
Okay, great.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Yes, and, and when I send out, when I prep the, the new agenda for the, for the next meeting, tomorrow weeks, I will detail and I would put links to, you know, the, the, the documents, so we can, we have much clarity with that. Is that okay, Beth?
Yeah, that's fine. Great.
Excellent. Thank you so much. General discussion items. So we're getting, so we spend the, the last meetings talking about procedural stuff, right? Things that systemically would work better within the city. We talk about the possibility of creation of a portal, as it's an automatic system for people to be able to submit letter of intents, also the same portal that would contend the information in relationship to vacancies, where people would be able to keep track of where the application is, so nobody falls through the cracks. And we were talking a lot about that, and I mentioned last, last, last meeting that now we're gonna start moving towards talking to people. And that talking to people involves the first step, which is talking to our, to what I wanna call our captive audience, which is people that are serving right now. They are sitting right now in boards and commissions. Hey, Gwen?
Hi. How are you?
Good. Hopefully, you're, you're having a good starting of the school year.
Uh, yeah, it's been really very invigorating, I guess I could say.
Excellent.
Yes. Very good. Thank you.
So when we're tabling the minutes for the next meeting, so we're gonna have three, three, uh, three set of minutes to approve in the next meeting, and now we're moving to the general discussion items. We, I'm gonna restate this. We have said that our meetings are gonna be the second week and the four, the second and fourth Tuesday of each month. And miraculously, that worked for everybody. And I wanna say, Mara, thank you so much for being flexible, and everybody here for being patient and gracious about that. Okay, so we're gonna get into, into sort of the meat of doing outreach, and that's gonna, and the success or not, or, you know, the failure of that outreach is gonna depend on us, on the members of the, of the committee. I'm gonna turn my screen. And let me see. I think I had to select the screen that I wanna, yes, there you are. So I sent a link for each one of you to take a look to the draft of the Google form that we, that I created. This is really important, right? So Jenna, thanks to the concerns that you brought up last meeting, I had a really good conversation in back and forth with the city solicitor in relationship to what would be public record, what would be considered, uh, subject to public record, right? So I'm gonna stop turning this for a little bit. So one of the questions was that, how are we able to collect testimonies? Being thoughtful of those who wanna give testimony, but they wanna remain anonymous, right? And one of the big conversations that we had was in relation to, to notes. What happened if I'm meeting with somebody and I'm writing down notes to be able, after that, to be able to bring the testimony to the select committee, right? That, that was sort of the big, the big one. I foreshadow that I would assume that it's subject to public record. I have confirmed, as Garrick said, better to confirm it, that, yes, it is subject to public record. And, and, and essentially, the, the idea behind it is that any kind of material that is created in one way or another, that is meant to be used in partially or totally in, in a report back to a city body, it's subject to public records. So if I'm meeting with somebody and I'm taking notes, because that's gonna end up in my report, that is part of public record. And that's make things a little more difficult, right? Because at the beginning, when, when we talked with Jamila, the idea was to have members of this body doing the outreach and collecting those testimonies, which was gonna be you guys being sort of the instrument for that, and by then you guys were reporting back. That didn't work, because, you know, we wanna, we wanna be able to, to accommodate those people that may not want to be known. They may want to remain anonymous. So what we came down to, and now I'm gonna literally turn my screen again. So we have created this. And and the idea right now, what we're gonna do is that we thought pretty deeply about how to work this in a way that everybody giving testimony has the freedom to opt in on out, be, using identifiers, right? Name, location, etc. So the way how we, we thought about this was that still, the members of the, this committee are gonna, are gonna do the outreach, but the kind of outreach that they are gonna do is gonna be different. The kind of outreach that you guys are gonna be doing, rather than you guys collecting the testimonies, you are gonna have the conversations. And you are gonna point out, and the people who are you, you're having those conversations, that you're gonna get assigned, you're gonna point out to those people, uh, the link for the form. Right? So in that way, whatever material you guys are creating, because you are not expected to report back those conversations at all. You're not expected. So any material that you are creating is not expecting to come back here. But what is expected from you is to do the outreach, to have those conversations, to hear the person, to hear if the person wants to go anonymous or not, if we're gonna pull it or not, and point them in the right direction to be able to, to get to the Google form. So in that way, you guys are not in a situation where you don't really know what to do, and people have different options to be able to openly participate on this process. And I would like to set up to, to open the floor to, for comments or any kind of idea about this. Jenna?
I'm a little bit confused about what you just said. So is the idea that we're just reaching out, say, to the chair of another public body and saying, we've put together this forum, we would welcome testimonies from members of your body and leaving it at that? Or are we having the conversation, but just not bringing the information back to the board? And if they say something interesting, then asking them to come and make testimony, I don't know, when you said have the conversation with them, what's, what's the substance of the conversation? That's the part of outreach that we're doing?
So the, the outreach is, as you said, you know, everybody's gonna get assigned four to five, uh, different people from different boards or commissions, right? You're gonna go, you're gonna talk to them saying, this is what we're doing. Hopefully, you're gonna explain where they said a committee, blah, 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 this was why it was created, this is the reasoning behind it, and we're sort of, we, we did this in the first part, now we are sort of contacting people that are serving. And, and, you know, we're looking about transparency, we're talking about procedures, we're, we're talking about streamlining. And I would like to encourage you to, to, and we create a forum. So you have, you're gonna have the conversation of why we exist, why we're looking for testimonies. And, and, you know, whatever that person wants to share with you or not, that's up to them. You're not expected to report back anything. Right? And I think that's, that's the big difference, right? So the, the, the point of the outreach that you're doing is set up to, you know, you're gonna be ambassador for this select committee, you're gonna explain why we're doing, what we're hoping to do, why we're doing it, what, why it was created, and, you know, and talk about that to the, to the chair or anybody that, some, maybe a chair said, you know what, I think that you have to talk to this member of my committee, because I think that person has, and, and, you know, you do the same with that person, right? It's that simple. And at the end of that conversation, you take, we will love for you, within your capacity, because, you know, we have to remember, to be able to, for me to be able to be here saying, whatever comes to my, my head and my mind, is privilege. Not a lot of people has the privilege to be able to sit here and say whatever they wanna say. I mean, if you look what I said during the Northampton Police Recommission, that's privilege. So I would say that's the kind of conversation we're looking. Any other conversation that you wanna, wanna have with that person, that's up to you. You're not, again, you're not expected to, to, to report back to us. Okay? Is that, is that, that's answer to your question, Jenna?
I, yes, I guess my question is, if, if the conversation evolves and the person that we're contacting decides they wanna share more, and we sort of get into a discussion about it, and that's something, and we hear something that we think would be useful for this body to understand at that point, then I'm assuming we would wanna come back and report and take notes, and I, I, I guess I'm just trying to understand if the conversation evolves beyond that sort of preliminary, what you just described, if here's who we are, here's what we're looking for, encourage them to give testimony. If it goes anywhere beyond that, what do we do with that information? Because in the world of the planning board, my understanding of open meeting law is that you, if you have a conversation that would have any impact on your deliberations, that that is, uh, needs to be made part of the public record. So if I was having a conversation with a chair, just because I didn't report it back doesn't necessarily mean it wouldn't affect how I'm thinking about things. So that's where I'm a little unclear about whether we should just cut off those conversations or what to do with the information.
The, the charge that I'm giving you is the charge that I'm giving you. If you decide to have those conversations, as far as I'm concerned, that's up to you. The charge that I'm giving you is to put the mission of the, of the select committee out, to explain what we're doing, how we're doing, why we're doing it, encourage people to go to the Google form. If they wanna talk, you, I mean, if, let's put it like this, if somebody wants to talk to you, you have to say, oh, hold on. If you tell me X, Y, and Z, and I have to write it down, I'm gonna have to, you know, that's gonna be public, you're gonna have to do that. Okay? But as far I'm concerned, the charge that I'm, that I'm giving you, the task is, doesn't, 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 there is not an expectation of you having to report back. There is not gonna be a meeting for you to report back. I talked to seven people and they, no. That's, you know, this, this is literally the same than a city council member having a conversation with next door neighbor or somebody who is complaining because there is a crater in their street, which is, my street is full of those, right? My conversation complaining to Jim about the crater in my street is not subject to open meeting law, I mean, to, to public record request. It's not subject, no. He, he can say, Javier, at the meeting, Javier told me that he has a crater in the street. Or he can say, you know, some neighbors have told me that there is a crater in Northern Avenue, which is true. Right? So do you understand what I'm saying? Excellent. Uh, Gwen?
Hopefully, my fan is not too loud. Can you guys hear me okay? Thanks. Well, I looked at the forum and I thought it was just right in terms of, you know, I mean, you know, sometimes, you know, I guess it would depend on the context, I'll kind of, responding to what Jana was asking is, like, you know, some things just come up because you see people around town, which is very normal to happen in North Hampton. So there are conversations that happen and, you know, I, I guess the way I feel about it is like, you know, it kind of takes it up out of anyone, our hands, because no matter, you know, even if we're doing some kind of reporting or something like that, it's always gonna be biased. And so to me, it's better to have that written and have it in a firsthand account. Um, and then also, um, in terms of just privacy, I think. But those are just some thoughts that I had. I, I, I thought it seemed like it was just right. I I, I guess, I guess it would be, maybe, maybe we could add a little more about the mission at the top of the page. And so that's just kind of a thought I had, but that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Gwen. Cynthia?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, Javier. I'm having a huge disconnect here, because why, why even talk to them if we want them to fill out the form is my first question. Because, let's, let's be honest here. I mean, if I call, if I'm supposed to contact Bob, and what I'm really interested in, Bob, hey, Bob, how did you get on this board? And Bob says, my sister-in-law told me to apply. Now, that's a relevant piece of information, right? Or the mayor told me to. Or, you know, all those kind of, that's, that's a relevant piece of data gathering information that I would love to see how people took the first step, because we're talking about accessibility. Why aren't people taking that first step? So I kind of wanna know that. And when the question says, have you previously served on a board or commission? Well, I'm assuming they have, because I wouldn't have gotten their name. So I'm not sure that question, you know, has, I mean, it's kind of like, yeah, you're, you're on a board. And then I'm just interested in a little bit more for gathering information on the Google form. How did you hear about this position? You know, I, I mean, I'm really interested in the access. And so, um, so why even have a conversation with them? I mean, I'm, I'm getting hung up in the city solicitors' notes and all that kind of stuff you can or you can't do. Why don't we just, you know, do the form the way we want the form and have them fill out the form? Because then it becomes public record. And that will say something to us if people are like, ah, no, I don't wanna do, I don't wanna do that, you know, that'll say something. But help me out. I, it just might be a huge disconnect that I'm having right now.
Yeah, and I'm gonna sort of address that, right? So those, those are two things, right? The first one, it's, it's a simple fix, right, to adding, how did you hear, oh, how were you recruited, or how do you end up serving, right? That's, that's sort of the first thing, and that's an easy fix, adding it to the form. Why? Why do we wanna have a form, right? And this is interesting, because when we were working on the, uh, openable bill, the, the police reform bill, uh, two years ago, I, I would love, Cynthia, and I'm gonna be, and I'm, I'm gonna say this because we know each other really well. I would love for me to tell people that we live in a, in a, in a racist systemic society. And people take my word. I would love that. It's not like that. And even more Massachusetts, right? Massachusetts is sort of characteristic of, let's, let's create a committee for things that we don't wanna deal with. I'm not saying that this is the case, but, you know, in a, in a lot of other cases, it is, right? So because we are part of a process, because we are, our, our, our charge is to study the barriers, whatever recommend, I was gonna say solution, whatever recommendation we come in, we need to be able to point why we got to that recommendation. Testimonies are, in my point of view, and the gathering of testimonies in those conversations are an important piece for transparency and for us to be able to show how we got there, right? We talked a little bit a couple of meetings ago that, if you haven't read the, the Northampton Police Recommission Report, I would invite you to do it. Dan Kennedy and Cynthia did a wonderful job putting that together. And most of the chapters, it's, they began with an extract of testimonies that we had from people either filling out the Google form that we created, coming to public hearings and giving testimony, or sending directly testimonies to the commissioners, right? And at the end, if I remember well, Cynthia, you know, way better than me this, towards the, the, the last part of the report, we added a set of testimonies. So I see testimonies as a way to show how our thought process got influenced to the recommendations that we're giving, that those recommendations are not random and are not just, you know, because, just because, right? And this is really good, because this makes me think about, you know, how other ways we can, we can show, besides, you know, the recording of these meetings and the discussions that we have, how else we can show our thought process in relationship to the recommendations that in some point we're gonna start talking about that. Hopefully, I'm sort of answering your, your, your concern.
Well, I, I agree with you completely, but I think I'm, I'm sort of hesitant, because you set, you set the conversation up, Javier is like, well, if you take those notes, be careful.
I have to. I, 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 and you know me well, I'm the messenger. It's not that message makes me happy.
I, I'm just, yeah, I mean, I just know we, yeah, Mari, Mari, you're, you're shaking your head too, so I think you might be like, wanting to jump in here as well. But, um, if I'm gonna talk to an individual, I'm gonna take some notes, and they're gonna tell me, yeah, my brother-in-law told me that he's the relative of so-and-so, and they said, do this, because you're a shoe-in, or I'm gonna talk about that, right? I'm gonna, I'm, that's data.
Okay, as, as long as you guys, when you do those conversations, you are clear about this is gonna be church, this is not gonna be church. As, as long as everybody's clear, I, I think it's, it's, it's for a game.
Okay, I just wanted, you know.
No, no, I, I appreciate it, and I appreciate you.
No, the other piece to this is, you know, there was a commission called the Houseless or the Homeless Commission, right? And they weren't under any auspices at all. And they just had free rein, have conversations and to make recommendations, etc., not subject to public meeting. And I'm wondering, you know, if that isn't a freer way to go, but we were, we're appointed as a committee, so we're bound to do all these other, you know, steps. But I'm, I'm talking too much, and so.
No, I, I, I appreciate what you're saying, and I, and I feel I'm participant of most of your concerns. Uh, Mara?
Yeah, I must say, I'm more inclined to just send out the Google forms. I think it's most efficient. I think that it, you know, we may lose out on some testimonies, but I do not, I'm not inclined to walk a thin line and be in a gray area of what someone can and can't tell me, or whether I should or should not be taking notes. I like the transparency of a Google form. I think it has the transparency we'd like. It's more efficient, it would be quicker, we could look over the results faster. I'm not inclined to get, get these testimonies and try and either cut someone off or take notes and let them be aware that it will be on the public record.
I hear you. My only concern with that is we would fall into one size fits, fits everything. So the only way to be able to give testimony would be either the form or coming in front of us. And, and I feel that we would, we would lose, and I'm saying this from the point of view that more, more than, more than forty testimonies were, were given to me orally with people being targeted and harassed by the Northampton Police Department. And none of those people would have never been willing to fill a form or, or do anything of that, because they would feel Or, or do anything of that, because they would feel that I don't want to let the city know who I am, but they can. They were, people even worried about, you know, geolocation. Uh, because of the internet and IP, right? So I, I hear you, but I, and I would invite you guys, if, if that's a route that we're going. To also think different ways that we can do outreach and sort of add it. Because if not, if we're expecting that the form is gonna be the only one, I think we're gonna be in trouble. Mara, anything else?
I just feel as though we're making accommodations for information we're not even sure exists yet. You know, we, and although I, you know, we have strong belief that it does exist. We are still changing the whole format to accommodate something. And that will further inconvenience and add more time to our data collection and assessment.
I, I, I hear you. I would say data collection without subjects. To give you that data. Doesn't exist. And I, and I, and I, and I hear you, and I think that um, we need to think. We need to sort of brainstorm and see what would be the best way. I personally, and I can, and, and by the way, I can be override by all of you guys. But I do feel that using one single way to do the outreach. And not having the conversations, it's gonna push us in a, in a, in a way that I don't think we want. Jenna.
So I have a few thoughts here. One is that um, I, I feel like part of what I heard both Mara and Cynthia say is. If for us as board members, recognizing how difficult it is to even schedule and get into these meetings. I think it's in everybody's best interest for us to conserve our energy. And if we're also expected to do outreach to contact particular people, to ask them to fill out this form. And then maybe or maybe not have a conversation that's maybe or maybe not on record. I'm just not convinced that that's the most effective use of our time uh, as board members. So I feel like perhaps an alternative might be that we send out some version of. Um, basically a call for testimony. And invite people to provide testimony in the format that feels most comfortable to them. So share our upcoming meeting schedule, share a link to this form. And share that if they would prefer to give anonymous oral testimony to um. If there's a way for them to somehow reach out to us, I mean, I recognize this, I'm saying that, that they then uh, you know, would, would have an email on public record. But perhaps there's a way around that um, so that um. You know, we're giving people some options upfront. I also think that on this form, we can put an optional, if you would be. Uh, willing to have a follow-up conversation with somebody, provide your contact information. So people who might actually be willing to go on record and expand on their answers. Would have an opportunity to provide that information to us. So I think covering the anonymous, um, people who don't want to be on record at all is tricky. But on balance, I agree with Mara that sort of designing our whole process around those folks. Um, I, I, I don't think is the most efficient use of our time. So I think I, I, I have other thoughts about the form itself um, and the content. But perhaps we should sort of resolve this issue before getting more into the meat.
Yes, Gary.
Yes, um, so I understand, like, uh, I, I really am feeling in on the side of a lot of people's hesitancy. With this situation, um, and I, I want to say a couple of things. One is that I'm getting the feeling that we're applying. Some of the methodology that could have been used for the police commission, which was very a review, uh, which is, which is a very hot button issue. There's a lot of uh, chance that you're gonna get into some salacious material, if you want to be anonymous, you know, when you're being harassed by police and whatnot. As opposed to what I'm understanding is that our goal right now is to contact people who are already, as Javier said, captive audiences. So people who are on boards, um, I don't see, or maybe, you know, maybe I'm wrong, I, I don't see a lot of like. Uh, really racy stuff coming out of these conversations. And so it's nice to make sure that we're, you know, dotting our i's and crossing our t's. But I, but, but I personally can see us, you know, just calling, I don't know. Bob C. from so-and-so, and just being like, hey, this is what the commission is, I really love you to explain as much as possible. And, you know, we can, me and Bob C. could have a conversation. And I could still glean some information and let them know that, like, if you want this to be anonymous, we'll, we'll make this anonymous. But um, I also want to, you know, let it be known that even if someone tells you something and, and you take some notes. The only issue is if it gets requested, there's a public records request, and I, I can't really foresee. A, a lot of interest in some of these miscellaneous notes of me talking to a head of a department, you know, I, I, like. Or maybe I'm wrong, i- if that's not how public records work, you know, we just have to make sure that if we do take notes, we keep them correct. Uh, much like in my city council life, that I have to save every email that comes through. Um, you know, I, I have been hit with the public records request, and, you know, so then I had to go and sort these things out. But that was only once in the last few months, and that was an issue that really was a, a hot button item. So I'm wondering if we're, we're being too cautious right now. And. I don't know, ma- ma- maybe I'm the only one who feels that way.
No, I, I sort of tend to agree with you, Gary, and on that one, um. Again, I mean, you know, ag- ag- and I'm gonna state it again, I can be, I, I will do whatever you guys want to do. Right? But the reality is that. Gathering testimonies in a, in a context they were, that we're doing. And that's the reason why I mentioned privilege, be able to, 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 to come and say X, Y, and Z without repercussion, without anything happening, without anything, you know, looking bad at me. I don't care. I, I, I have that privilege, right? But my privilege is not privileged, it's not the same privilege of anybody else, right? And I would understand if somebody's serving and has had a bad experience, and, and they don't want to jeopardize their position in that commission. And so they, they, they want to say it, but they don't want to, you know, be their identity being chair. Or they have seen something that they, you know, um. Uh, whatever, I don't know. But the problem is that I don't know is that I feel that any city body has to create. A level field for people to be able to chair. And what, and, and as, as far as I feel, and I'm gonna say it again, once, one, one, I mean. A really good, really easy example. I, I believe it or not, I have found people that have told me how easy is to navigate the Northampton City website. I had found people that have told me that, oh, it's so, so straight, so easy. Took me twenty-five minutes to find the Northampton Police Review Commission, uh, uh, report. And I grew up with computers. Right? So. I don't know, I, I just putting that up, Wen.
So I'm thinking like, I mean, haven't we discussed some of the things we would definitely want to know, just straight up, no. We just, those are just some of the fundamental things, you know, that I was kind of hearing Cynthia speak about, like. How long, for example, how long have you served on this, this position? You know, how did you arrive at serving in this position? Um, you know, some of that stuff is fundamental, but I still um. Do believe that there should be a space for testimony. Um, if people want to write it, and. In terms of like, reaching out to people, um, you know, I love talking to people, so I personally don't have a problem with that. I also have the privilege of being able to, to have the ability to do that. Um. But. You know, maybe, maybe a softer approach initially, like, almost like sending out a request. Uh, through email in some way, and then, you know, following up a week later, or two weeks or a month later, you know. It's just saying, did you receive it? And, you know. I think following up, and um. I think it's kind of a mix, you know, some stuff can be really just sort of like really innocuous, like in, of, in terms of asking questions, you know. Um, and then, and then some of it might, might involve more. So those are just some thoughts I have. Thanks.
Thanks, Wen. Um, and, and I have to sort of s- say that I have got a couple of fun calls from people. Uh, about certain, you know, situations that they have, have uh. And, and Cynthia has mentioned, people had, you know, people had, you know, people that had sent. Application after application after application, and, and, you know, they, and they, they are sort of never hearing back. And people assuming things that they may be, you know, one-sided and. Um. And I want to be able to. At least have the option. For people to bring that up. I prefer that the option exists and it's not being used. To the option not existing, so people cannot opt into it, right? Um. I know, I, I think this is a really good conversation. Jenna.
Uh, so I feel like uh, part of what might be happening here is that we're trying to do too much with the form. Because I'm aware that even if we were to do individual outreach to say, we want to have this conversation. And maybe could you think about filling out this form, even if you want the form to be anonymous? As soon as we've shared the link, unless you're planning on writing it down on papers that we can hand out. There's gonna be an email chain, at which point it's part of public record that we shared the link with someone. So I almost feel like, can we just create the form as something that we can share the link around widely and invite testimony? And then we can try to think of some other completely separate method for collecting anonymous oral testimony for people who feel like they need to go that route. I'm just not sure that this form can be all things for all testimony. I hear what you're saying, and we do want to leave space for other people. But I just don't think that this, w- we're trying to do too much with one uh, one system here. And I think maybe we can do better to have multiple systems.
Um. I absolutely agree with that.
Yeah. So with that, I feel like if we can sort of think about getting the form into a place where we're asking. For the right information that we want, that we imagine we, I mean, last time we talked about what are the, some of the questions that you, we might ask. I think you Javier were going to maybe come up with a list that we could use as a sort of starting off point. Um, when we were imagining having these conversations directly with um, chairs or with other people. So I think we want to pipe in some of that information into the form without making it too unwieldy. Um, I also think we need to kind of clarify who the audience of the form is, because the way it's currently written. If your answer to the first question is no, have you previously served or applied? The, the next two questions aren't relevant to you. Um, because you didn't serve, and therefore you didn't have either a positive or a negative experience. And if you haven't engaged in the process at all, similarly, you may not have any thoughts about the applications or appointments and so forth. So again, if this is a, if this is a, a form specifically for people who we know have served. This might be an okay starting point, but if we're also trying to capture people who. Applied and never served or never applied, then I think we need a different set of questions. Because this is not going to capture the, the nuance of what we're looking for.
I, I sort of disagree with that. Mostly because they, they are a ton of forms that, you know, if you answer no in question number two, go directly to the number five, right? And this is the case, I mean, obviously, so for example, when we created the form for, for gathering testimonies about policing. We never thought, oh, what happened is somebody who, you know, who has never encountered police, see this form, they are not gonna be able to answer. They are not gonna answer it, because it's clear the targeted audience, right? Uh. That's, that's sort of my take into this, and the reason why it's done in this way is because this works for. And, and this is a conversation about, you know, reaching out to serving chairs, civilian chairs, not the city lessons. We're not even talking about outreach to the wider community, right? And one of the problems that we have is that, uh, even though the city has a list of people. That have sent cover letters, letter of intention and, and CVs to be able to serve. Um, and have never been called to serving anything. And I know because I have gotten calls about that. Uh, the city cannot give it to us, and if they give it to us, it's gonna be heavily redacted, right? So um, I do agree that there needs to be another layer. Of outreach, which is was what I told Mara before. Um, if somebody comes to this forum and sees, oh, I have never served, but I apply, I, I, I apply, so I do it. I have neither served or applied. I don't know, I'm not gonna do this. I wouldn't do it. What I'm gonna do if I haven't served or applied, I wouldn't do it. Um, or see if somebody served. So here, so I, there is one person who did it. Who uh. It's member of the Human Rights Commission. Right? And this is how, this is how it would look, this sort of a. Right? And, 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 you know, and, and. This testimony looks sort of straightforward. So I, you know, I. The, I, I'm gonna be upfront with this. I think the process works in both ways, not only because we need testimonies. But also because I need you guys as members to start shaping your opinion, to start getting information, to start talking to people. Start, and, and this is essential, to start talking to people. Right? That, I need that. In the, in the same way, how Garrick, as, as a councilperson, talks to his constituents. Talks to them, right? Because that's the only way that he's gonna, you know, and he gets probably a ton of emails. Us to be able to do the right, to do it right, we have to talk to people. We are not gonna be able to have, we're never gonna have all the answers, but. We are never gonna be able to have a good sense of what's going on if we think that a form will make it. Right? Uh, I see the form as anybody who is willing to write down testimony, okay, the form. The form, even in the, in the bottom of the form, there is a, there is a section where anybody can upload. Okay, I want to write it in Word, I just write it in Word. We had people, homeless people that created uh, that uh, created uh. Google accounts just to be able to fill, fill out forms, right? So I'm not, I'm not necessarily worried about, about uh, people not being able to get to the form. But my point is that the form is meant essentially to gather testimony for people to write whatever they need to write. For us to get a sense if this is a person who has served or not, how long and the level of experience that they, you know, they have. And but I do agree completely that there has to be another layer. Because if we don't talk to people. I mean, and, and I'm gonna be upfront here, guys, I have asked you to go and talk to people, so people come to give police testimony. We haven't have anybody. So I think it is, everybody in this, in this committee has to sort of pump up. And, and you know, and that, and that was essentially the reasoning for me to say, okay, if we cannot, if I do, I don't want to put you in a position where. You have to go write the testimony, write it down. It's gonna be on you, the redacting, because if you write it down, that's public record. I said, no, that's way too much. But what about if the members just have conversations, and, and the conversation, the goal of the conversation. Is to lead people to fill out the form. If we come out with another layer of fill out the form, and also you have this other option. I'm fa- I'm totally love it. But again, I do feel that in this, the work doesn't get done in these meetings. And if we're not gonna be talking to the community, I don't know how we're gonna come with recommendations. Jenna, is that an all or a new hand?
Uh, um, can you go back to the form itself? Um, to the the questions rather than the this one response?
Let me go back.
So, um, I guess I want to say what 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 you said, which is I I respectfully disagree. So my feeling is that, yes, if somebody's sort of never served, never applied, never thought about applying, doesn't care about applying, probably not going to fill out this this form and that's fine. Um, but the way that this form is currently written, the first two questions are this. Have you previously served or applied? Yes or no? And the second question, which appears to be required at this time, is what has been your experience serving on city commission? So the second question assumes that you have indeed served. So that would need to be rewritten. If I feel like it's possible and in fact desirable that somebody's answer to the first question might be, no, I have not served and applied. I have wanted to do so, but I haven't done so for whatever barriers that, you know, we're all here trying to figure out. And this form in its current iteration doesn't really, um, uh, leave much space for that level of interaction. Again, because the third question there, fourth question, do you have any recommendations to improve the existing process? Assumes that you actually know what the existing process is, when perhaps for some people their barrier might be. I don't know what the, um, I don't know what the openings are, I don't know what the requirements are and so forth. So, um, you know, have never even engaged in the process enough to know that they have responses. So I think having a form is good, collecting testimony is good, but I think we need to be really clear about who we actually think we want to have filling out this form and the information that we're trying to get from them. And I don't feel like what's currently here is is capturing that to its fullest possible extent.
Perfect. So I don't know if you saw that I, it's not required anymore. And certainly we can add a section that if you have not served or applied, is there any reason for that? And they can sort of explore into that and we can see that. Garrick. You're muted. I love the hand gestures, but you're muted.
Good, so I'm here. Um. So first off, I agree with Jenna about, um, we might need multiple forms. And and the way I looked at this first form was I felt like our last meeting, we talked about talking to chairs, our captive audience. So I really just looked at this as a form for that. Um, and so, you know, that first question of having previously served or applied would apply to a chair, like is it their second term? Is it there, you know, are you recurring? Is this your first experience? Is how I kind of view that. Um, and again, I I think that going back to the public records far is that I'm I'm assuming that most people who are serving on a committee or, you know, a board have gone through the public records because they've had meetings where you have to do the Zoom thing and they talk about that. I might be wrong. Um, with that being said, I I do think that, um, you know, down the road, we do have to look at another form, which is for the general public, for people who have applied, people who thought of applying. And I I did not see this form here in front of me as that form. I thought that this was just something that is kind of a starter for the people who are already in the system. Um, you know, a very basic way to approach that thing. Uh, and maybe I'm wrong. So I just, I just want to put that out there.
No, you're writing in the money. As we said, this is for the first, uh, sort of layer, the easy allegedly. The easy outreach. Uh, Wen.
Yeah, so I mean, um, right, that's, I guess that's a little bit of my confusion just right now. Um, because I was, I was, you know, if we're, if we're going to explore barriers, you know, we would want to, you know, advertise it, you know, you know, make it, make it publicly, public knowledge that 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 our committee is seeking this and then also present it in a way that is um, accessible for people to even submit the information. So like having some paper forms and then having that multi-layered approach of, you know, like one form for people just general public, um, you know, maybe, you know, do some kind of a local, you know, regional mailing, for example. Or, you know, something like that. Um, and then another one for active chairs where we're on the boards. And then, you know, we don't want to ignore people who are actually serving on boards in in whatever position. Um, because they might have something to contribute to. So I just asked the question, is there some way that we could have more time to work on this form in somewhat of a more collaborative way? Or creative, maybe a few of us you know, fool around with Google forums and do some creating and and then come back together and do it like that?
Yeah, so this is when it gets fun. Uh, the document can only be worked by the committee with quorum. And in open meeting. So I would be more than willing, I mean, I would need two more people besides me to have a special meeting to work this and I'm willing to do it. So who who is gonna volunteer? I'm willing to, and I'm not talking about the, our next meeting tomorrow in, uh, two more weeks, right? I'm meeting, I'm sending a little meeting to word this collaborative and that meeting is gonna be, uh, it's gonna, you know, I I need to because we're two, four, oh, no. Because we need quorum, right? So I'm I'm willing to create a subcommittee to see this form. So I'm, you know, again, this is literally, this is how it needs to be done. Because we cannot be editing a document that is going to be used within the public uh, privately, has to be done in a meeting openly to the public, right? And that meeting has to be advertised, has to have, has to be posted forty eight hours before, has to go through all that. So I'm willing to schedule, to, you know, to have that meeting. So I, when would you be able to do it? I know that you are, you know, with. Okay, excellent. We need one more person. Jenna?
Uh, it depends on when it's gonna gonna get scheduled, but, um, theoretically, yes.
Excellent. So Beth, I'm gonna let you know. Uh, probably by tomorrow, we're gonna come out with a date. Uh, oh. Cynthia, sorry.
Um, yeah, I mean, I think this is a good approach, but I would like us to all agree upon who the audience is. Who exactly the audience is when when we design the questions? And the other thing Javier, I want to ask that this document that you presented here wasn't attached to the agenda, so it was a draft. I'm gonna say drafted by you, so that's not a violation, right? Can't we, okay.
No, no, and and I shared the link with you. But the link, the link you would not be able to edit. And that was intentional.
Okay, okay. So there could be some sharing of that.
As long, as as long as members are not having a conversation and debating what should be on the document.
Okay, cool. Yeah. So the subcommittee would do this and then it would come to us and then we'd say, okay.
Yeah.
Um, and so just in terms of the audience, my, my personal sense is that this was going to be um, for people on boards and commissions to find out how they got there. But I could be wrong.
You're absolutely right. So let me show you and I have here. Let me see here. Um, where is it here? Hold on. This happened because I don't buy Microsoft, so I had to use pages. There you are. I'm gonna share with you. So this is a color coding of the assignments that each one of you is going to have. Right? But I cannot send this until we have the 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 form ready to go, right? I can send it if people feel comfortable having, you know, casual conversation with people, but we can, we can wait. So, um, twelve minutes left and we did, how many? Sort of a, a one point and a half of agenda. Um, cool. So so this form, as Garrick said and Cindy said, this form is targeted to people who are serving or sir, right? I mean, if if I'm a chair, a civilian chair, and I I keep stressing that, a civilian chair. No, I'm not talking about the 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 cities person in that in that position, right? Uh, and I have a member that just left and I think that member should have something to say. That's the reason why also says serving or served, right? Because again, easy tar, easy target. Uh, the rate, the people who are doing it now, right? So, cool, let me think how we're gonna move. So, um, Jenna, can you send to me and Wen your availability? The idea is to meet this week, so we we can get it done. And if we can get it done, uh, we would be able to move this pretty fast. Because I think this conversation, uh, is pretty informative to what we need to do. Is that okay, Jenna?
Uh, I thought that we have to post forty eight hours in advance, so I don't know how we would meet this week.
I'm I'm counting Saturday and Sunday.
Got it.
I know, Cynthia, you're absolutely right. Has to be business days. Anyway.
So I mean, I can send you my availability, but this week is, doesn't look great anyway, but it sounds like I'm not sure we could get it scheduled and posted in time regardless.
If we, if if we have your availability tomorrow, we either can opt to meet even Monday, if that's possible. Or depending the time, Wednesday, depending the time that we get that even on Friday. So, um, yeah. We, we.
I will try to send, I'll try to send you an email right after this meeting.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Perfect. Um. Let's see. So just to give you an update, uh, Jamila sent an email to the city solicitor a couple of weeks ago in relationship to the compensation. Uh, we still are waiting for a reading, sort of, it takes more time when we're asking not for a oral opinion, but for a written opinion, which is sort of more official. So that takes a little more. So we're still waiting for that. Um, what a match. And meeting a schedule, as I said at the beginning, we were able to come down to the second and fourth uh, Tuesday of every month. Um, so just summarizing, when Jenna and myself, we're gonna meet as soon as we can. Either, you know, Friday, Monday or Tuesday, whatever it is, and we're gonna work in this. Beth. Can you send me your availability? Can you send me your availability too? Uh, Friday, Monday, Friday next week. So sorry.
Friday, this week or Friday next week?
This week. I'm 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 reaching for the stars. Um. Yeah, can you send me your availability? Because I'm I'm gonna need you there. Um.
Okay.
Cool, 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 cool. Is there any other comment, any other question? Cynthia.
I just wanted to offer, um, but I don't know if it's premature. How do you all feel about, maybe I, we have this document from the city clerk, I think, that says this is how the process works. Um, if I schedule a meeting with the person where all those applications go and just I think, I think it's in the mayor's office and just say, how does the process work from your perspective? Is that out of line? Is that, I mean, it's data. Um, and, um, I mean, I'm happy to do it, but it might be premature. But it might give us some insights into the the form, so.
Well, the that document was sent to the members of the committee a month and a half ago.
Yes, or more, maybe.
Allegedly, we should have been able to have that, we would have been able to have that, if in the agenda. Allegedly, we would have been able to talk, to have that conversation inviting that person, right? So Cynthia.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Right? That was sent like two months ago. So I'm assuming that, yeah, yeah. So Cynthia, that would be beautiful. So.
But should we invite the person?
I I agree. I agree. Yes.
To the, to the meeting as opposed to me meeting with them one on one?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. So everybody's in agreement that that's gonna be part of the next meeting agenda? Excellent. I see a lot of nods.
Do we think it's the person named Court or do we know who that person is? That's the person that in my board we go to to find out.
I I I think so. Let me confirm with Penn, but that's, that name rings the bell.
Okay.
Yeah, Pam mentioned that that person, the same person.
Okay.
Um.
But what Karen might know, the answer to that question.
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to talk out of order, but yes, it's Court in the mayor's office.
Yeah.
And and Karen, can I ask you the question? So then you, because you are the chair of the city service committee where all of these applications go through, right? Or appointments?
Well, the applications don't come to us, the appointments do, so
The appointments.
The mayor's office makes the appointments and then we confirm them.
Okay. Okay, that's good. Good info for us. Yeah.
Excellent.
Carry on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen. Um, yeah, absolutely. Uh, Beth.
Um, what is the appropriate time to talk about when these meetings will be on Tuesdays and the?
Uh, let's do it right now. We have five minutes, either seven or seven thirty. It should be a really easy conversation.
Seven thirty personally, but.
Seven thirty is so much better for me.
Two, seven thirty. Garrick looks.
What's happening? Seven thirty is fine.
Gary looks indifferent to the time, so seven thirty. Mara? Excellent, excellent. Okay, seven thirty.
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty. So seven thirty to nine has to be an hour and a half, right? Um, cool. So we agree that the next, uh, the only agenda item that we have for sure are two, which is the mid, all the minutes that we need to approve. Plus Cynthia, let me know how they are reached to Court goes, okay? So we, if we, to see if we can secure, uh, him, uh, for next meeting. And.
Just to clarify, you want me to secure him or?
Yeah, if you can, that would be lovely.
Okay.
And just to clarify, so, and I almost forget this. Um. We, so how we, how me meeting with Ja, with, uh, with Wen and Jenna is gonna work is that it's gonna get posted as one of our meeting. Okay? So if you guys want to come, as long as I have quorum, we're fine and we're gonna be able to work it out. Okay, uh, you're not necessarily required, but it's, I'm gonna post it, I'm gonna post it as one of our meetings. So has the option for you guys to go and be part of the conversation. Is that okay?
I think that sounds great.
Excellent. Yeah. And I learned all this from Alex Jared. Literally.
He knows his stuff.
Oh, yeah. Uh, anyway, so, uh, motion to adjourn.
Karen has her hand up.
Oh, Karen, is that a new hand or an old hand? Or neither?
Sorry, it's an old hand.
Okay, motion to adjourn? Looking for one?
Make a motion to adjourn.
A second?
The same time?
I'm taking Cynthia, does that work?
It's fine with me.
I didn't, I couldn't catch it all. Okay, who wants to adjourn, Javier?
Yep.
Uh, Mara?
Yep.
Gwen?
Yes.
Jenna?
Yes.
Garrick?
Yes.
And Cynthia?
Yes.
Unanimous, everybody wants to adjourn.